Thank you. You didn't say, no, there's no doubt in this thing. Well, I just love the thing that's. Anyways, it is April 11th, 5:30, we'll start our regular board meeting. Um, first, is there any public comment? Once, twice, three times? All right, treasures report, please.
Oh. Um, so we have two motions, and the first is concerning paying the bills. And um, bear with me a moment while I find that amount.
Thirty thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Make a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of fifty thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
A second.
Any questions, any discussions?
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 No, you can, but I just.
And the second motion is, um, our treasury bills that we have invested in have matured. And so we have that money to reinvest, which we would like to do, but we're not exactly sure, there's a number of options, but you know, when the next group would mature. And we were talking about actually ladder in them. Um, so we, we want to, I want to talk to Paul before we make this. So the, the motion to the board is that we reinvest the money. Exactly how we do the laddering will be decided upon conferencing with Paul Hiccup. And that is my motion. All those in favor? Or if you have any questions, anybody have any questions, because I know.
Make the second.
Second, and then discussion, okay, no discussion.
The, I think I heard the motion is to reinvest it. The motion will be to um, ladder them pending discussion with Paul.
Right, unless he feels that laddering is not the right.
Yeah, but I support the ladder strategy. And would the interest, you anticipate that interest rates will be at least what we're getting currently, or?
Yes, well, what we're trying to do is maybe see in the long term, because in case they start heading back down that we've lacked in some good rates.
I mean, that the, whatever the rate is on these instruments currently is that the new rate would be comparable, or perhaps even higher.
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure that I have my phrasing correct.
You can.
Um.
Let's switch with glasses.
To reinvest the treasury bill funds with a plan to ladder them pending the fresh call.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Wait, who's second?
Thank you. Thank you. So we're up to consent agenda, um, which includes the approval of the minutes. Building committee report. Um, upper, I mean, no Upper Hudson and no admin. And there is a president's report. If you wish, we can take the building committee report. Consent to it now, and then you can bring up part that's an interview. In number two.
I think I opened, I opened that, yes.
Okay.
That's what I, and I spoke with Joy. The notes that are in the consent agenda are the sixth April notes.
Okay.
Day of sixth April.
Good. So, um, in that case, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay, um, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Jerry, hi?
Hi.
Yes. Oh, thank you. All right, now to our regular agenda. Well, the first thing on our agenda is a discussion of an incident that occurred here to me. No, yes, there is. Staff that was not. On. On Thursday, April 6th, an incident occurred at me. While this particular incident is not the only one that occurred that week. It was the most disturbing. A patron physically assaulted members of the staff as well as other patrons. Forcibly touching several persons, some multiple times. This individual also displayed indecent exposure. Vandalism to public property also occurred as the individual jumped over the desk and threw items on the ground. Efforts were made to herd the individual out of the library. And the staff worked at containing the situation for the 12 minutes it took police to arrive. We all want to thank the valiant staff, in particular Ian, head of reference who protected both staff and patrons with his own being. And Chloe, Frank, Henry, David, Maggie, and Michael. For all they did to get everyone through this as safely as possible. I don't know if people have questions or want to talk about this. I wrote this down because it was just easier for me to get through. But. Um, but it was important for everyone to know what happened. And how really brave the staff was, how well trained they were in dealing with the situation. Um, there is certainly much discussion about next steps again after this. One of which will definitely come up in item. Yeah, where's budget? Well, wherever budget is, budget number six, talking about security. And talking about, um, the ability for staff to continue, you know, their training in protocols and safety protocols. But it was important that the board knows what happened.
We, so item number six is 2024 budget, are we thought, think, we're not saying we're not going to do anything about security until 2024. Are we?
Well, we're going to talk about budget, we can talk about now, I don't, it is aligned in this budget, and we have to get Paul to make sure that we can go carry forth. But I figure it's going to be something that when we do, we're going to have to make sure it's as robust as possible for 2024. So. So if. Yes.
Um, we mentioned that this was the most pronounced of a few incidents. The preceding, like, um, the preceding week, um, was it always the same patron?
Yeah, no, um, there was another incident where someone was here. It. Um, oh. Hostile. The person left. Person came back, but he was locked up. Um, and then this person went over to the bodega and threatened someone with a knife. Then the police got them there. So, yes. Um, but believe it or not, this Thursday's was even worse than that, that's pretty darn scary.
Right.
Okay, so things are happening here again, you know, they have been, but smaller incidents. It's, this is not the first time incidents have occurred, period. But there's that churn, and it's time again to talk about what we're going to do. The other. So our second item is the approving or discussion of the architect for the HVAC system. Would you like to?
Certainly.
Lead us in.
Really, thank you.
Thank you.
So we put out a request for a proposal for, uh, design services for the HVAC system. We received three proposals. And we interviewed two of the respondent to the proposal. Uh, two firms were at Taylor Riley Wilson. Our professional preservation. And the other firm was Ethan Cohen Wilson Baker, our credit. Uh, we met with both those firms for half an hour. Had, uh, some paired questions, and it's open discussion with them. And there was follow-up, uh, emails, I believe, with both the firms. Um. In a nutshell. My opinion is that both firms are qualified to do the work. Uh, the two firms, as part of their proposals, had interpreted our request for phase construction differently. Uh, Taylor Riley Wilson had originally proposed completing the work in the 21-month period. During our interview, we talked about whether that would allow for phase construction, whether that was enough time or not. And they did indicate that some more time may be required. And if more times required, uh, that their fees would go up to accommodate that additional time. The other firm, Nisi Cohen Wilson Baker, uh, had interpreted that phasing requirement and had come up with a schedule of 31 months to go through from, uh, start of design to completion of uh, construction. Uh, and with the understanding that there would be two separate construction periods for the phase construction. During the interview with them, we talked about whether those could be consolidated into one construction package that would be done in a phased manner and could be in a shorter timeline. And they did indicate they were open to that. Now, Paul followed up, my understanding, my understanding is, I have not seen these emails personally, but my understanding is that Paul followed up with both firms. And asked both firms to provide a revised quote, the proposal, that would be a 28-month duration for, from design through construction. I have seen the revised quote from Taylor Riley Wilson. I have not seen a revised quote from Nisi Cohen Wilson Baker, I'm not sure if anyone in this room has seen that quote. Um. So, I, I summarize what I do know. Uh. And I'll refer to Taylor, Taylor Riley Wilson as TRW even forward. Um, TRW's original quote was 136,600. It's 136,600 dollars for 21 months. The revised quote was 154,600 for 28 months. Nisi Cohen Wilson Baker's original quote was 157,200 for 31 months. I've not seen the revised quote. Perhaps their quote has gotten, been reduced, I don't know that for a fact. The two firms, I think, are both qualified to do the work. I did notice one significant difference in the two proposals, and that was when they could start the design work. Nisi Cohen Wilson Baker, MCWB, have indicated in their quote, in their proposal, and I have confirmed it in further conversation with Gina Blennis, that they would be available to start design in September of 2023. I then followed up with a conversation with Mark Taylor. And Mark confirmed that if they were given authorization to proceed now, they would be prepared to start on the 24th of April of 2023. So. Uh, I think that is a significant difference in terms of the start of the work. Uh, those durations would then start at that date when they indicated they would start, so. The fees, I think, are fairly comparable between the two. Uh, the fact that one firm is prepared to start sooner, uh, I think has I'll say trip, trip. Has shifted my thinking in terms of, uh, who I would recommend at this time. I, I think I would recommend, uh, Taylor Riley Wilson. Um, my understanding from conversations with Paul and is that Paul was comfortable working with Taylor Riley Wilson when the elevator was designed and built, and he thought that project went well. Um. I think he also felt that the historic structures report went well. Um. I don't know where it comes down on the two of those, and that's. I, so those are my thoughts on the topic. I propose that I will abstain from the vote unless there's a gridlock, and which case then I would pose that we do a coin toss. This is my personal, I, I, I'm both, I think, both qualified, I think that the one, the timeline, I think we can have discussion about that, those are my thoughts.
Um, I spoke to Paul about this last week. And he did know something, he says pretty much what you have said. About what he thinks and about what you say, that they're both competent and capable, can work with both. He saw a six of one happen as another in A versus six of half a dozen of another in B, but he could go either way. So he is, he is not, you know, pushing one firm over the other, he said they're both fine.
Having sat through the interview process and looked at, I feel much more comfortable for this project using TRW. I think they're, they've got a good grasp, but they want to get it done. And obviously both firms are qualified, but I just feel more comfortable with TRW on this.
Yours.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions on it?
No, I didn't, I didn't, and I did look it over.
Does the, does the building, the city, does the building have a recommendation? That they're bringing to the board, or are we all deciding now?
We met at the last meeting, had the interview right then and there, at our last meeting, and thought, had a chance to talk about it since then.
Better.
Are you comfortable with making a decision tonight? I, I will. Oh, we'll go to the, um, the virtually. Marie and Jerry, any thoughts?
Um, no, I, I'm just, uh, Kirsten, um, did you say that one of the firms, the second firm, was giving us a price of 157 for 31 months?
Correct.
And the other was 154 for 28 months, so, I mean, there's a little bit of a better value there. We want to make.
There's a, there's a slight difference in dollars per month, yes. But the second firm, Nisi Cohen Wilson Baker, uh, is not available to start until the fall, so they are, you know, that we would be treading water for a while, uh, and.
The others would start right away, you said, or very shortly.
Come again?
The, the first firm could start fairly soon.
Yes, and I would actually recommend that if the board is comfortable with it, that we authorize uh, Paul to negotiate with the firm, TRW, to sign a proposal based on their original proposal of 136,600 and a duration of 21 months with additional costs of, I think it's, uh,
It's only like 154.
Eighteen thousand divided by seven. So whatever that number is, per month, for additional fees for additional time required for the project.
Yes, if necessary.
If necessary, yes, yes.
Um, uh, Marie, you have anything? Okay, I, I'm gonna, my little comments here are, A, let's not forget that some of this money's coming in, have a timeline, especially the DRI.
Yes.
And when you need to complete the project, not just start the project, or we don't know, fill the extensions, we don't know, it's easier with.
But is it there?
Do you remember the date? I'm, I'm afraid to give a number.
And I don't, and.
I know, I just don't remember the number offhand, but it's, it's, it's not a long, it's not like years. Yes, oh, definitely, definitely. Um, otherwise we, otherwise we'd have a problem, and I will say this about TRW. So that I appreciated the way they dealt with assumptions. And appreciated the way they ask questions about, you know, of us and about those assumptions. Um, just a bit more than I thought. You know, the con group did.
Well, and I think it does go in their favor that they did a good job with the elevator project, and they can do a good job of it.
They did. Worked through there, I don't know how many times I'd be able to climb, although I never get in the elevator without my cellphone. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And that's not that, that's not that.
I work on the fourth floor, stairs every day.
If you contingent, you feed it, landed about each 2900.
Right. So.
Yes.
Is there, are there other questions in the session?
I, I have, I'm sorry, I was muted earlier. I have, I have to say that I, uh, came into this leaning toward, um, MCWB. Um, I worked with Larry very closely on one of the proposals. Um, I don't remember which one. Um, I don't know if you all remember that if it wasn't for Larry being willing to work with me on the, the grant application, we probably.
Hmm? It was the ARPA.
Uh, we, we wouldn't have had a proposal to submit.
Mm-hmm.
And he did it without charging us under a very short timeline. And I was very com, I found him very comfortable to work with. Uh, in looking over the materials in preparation for this meeting, I was concerned about the delay that I saw in their proposal, though. Uh, particularly because one of the things that Larry emphasized at the time that we were working on the application was that the price of things only goes up with delays. Um, so I'm disappointed that they can't start earlier. Did, did Gina say what the restriction was, that?
I would, I would, she did not, but I would surmise it is that they are busy, that they have a lot of work that's on their plate right now, and they have certain amounts of staff committed to ongoing tasks and just don't have the available staff to jump on this right now.
Yeah, I think they pretty much implied that when they were here.
So. Um. And, and like I said, I think both firms are qualified, would do good work. And, um, I, I think it real comes down to what is going to work best for the library at this time.
Mm-hmm. Would you like to make a motion that we go ahead and?
I can, I could make a motion, but as I said, I will abstain from that, so.
Like to phrase to?
Um, I would make a motion that we authorize Paul to negotiate with TRW uh, for design services for the HVAC reconstruction project. Uh, for base fee of 136,600 and a duration of 21 months. With the option to extend up to 28 months at a rate of $2,600 per month. As required to efficiently complete, uh, design and complete the HVAC reconstruction project within the budgets available to the library.
I would like to second the motion.
Hmm, any other discussion, questions?
And, um, they're going to, they're going to treat it as all one project, right? Because my understanding is that we wanted both grants so that it could, because we saw it as being more efficient.
Yes.
The, the, the discussion was that they would treat it as one construction project, but they would track the funds separately. Um. In terms of the aid. And then there would be the two fa, the phases of construction that would be required to keep the library open and operational during construction.
Thank you. They said they've done this before, so.
Yes.
Right, any other questions? Discussion? In that case, we have the motion, we have the second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Jerry? Good, done. Thank you. Thank you for putting together that piece too for us.
To the committee for helping participation and, um, in that conference as well.
So next, um, I want to apologize that the next piece, I didn't send any, a lot of, or any real information out about the Upper Hudson representation. Um, I only got a heads up over the weekend and got an answer from Tim this morning. So. The board of Upper Hudson is an elected board, it's not public elected, but is elected within the system. Um, the smaller libraries are, there's a nominating system within Upper Hudson's board, uh, those nominate for the smaller ones, those are presented to the board at the annual, to the entirety of the membership on June 14th, and it's voted on then. The five bigs, which Troy is one of them, the, the dedicated seats are done a little differently, it isn't an internal Upper Hudson Board decision, or we don't go through that process, the individual needs to be nominated, uh, by their own board. That's the last piece of formality until the annual meeting, when it, oh, that name also goes before the board. The seat that I have been holding for my own seat as five years, and then the time that I completed Mary Muller's seat is up again this year. Tomorrow is the Upper Hudson meeting, I don't know how far we'll get into it, but to be honest, I put it on as an issue now. Um, so if we're ready to consider who wants to take on this role, we've got that. And I will admit that I am not, I will be more than happy to take up the nation again if this board is willing to, so choose, choose me to do that. I don't know how else to say that without. There it is, so. Um. We'll have to go to, so I'll ask this first, does anyone have any questions about the process, the rationale, what needs to be done? What it is that gets done? Yep. So.
I'll wait for others to trump it.
Okay.
I'm just sure when, when it's forward to ask some.
So how often does the Upper Hudson Board meet?
It's supposed, it once a month. But if we've done everything, and I like to say facetiously, if we've done all our homework, and there's nothing pressing, um, then it's usually 10 times, we don't usually meet in December and or August.
And is it in person or virtual?
It's so far, it, right, it's gone back to being in person, they've never gone through the process of, um, the public hearing and the public meeting, uh, they were going to model it, they don't really have to, but they want to model it. So far, they have not offered the opportunity of hybrid. At this point, it was either all virtual, and now it's all in person. Um, so the individual will be there at least 10 times, there's at least 10 meetings, duties as I won't say required, but as volunteered or told. I won't say required, but as volunteered or told. The group is really good about, for example, we went through all the diversity training that's been offered to the entirety of the system. And we did the largest chunk and pretty much everyone showed for it. Uh, there is a requirement to be on a committee. Different committees meet. At different points in the year, except for finance, which meets every single month right before the regular. Regular meeting. Services and admin have a different schedule depending on the time of year and what they have to discuss. And they will start meeting again for the annual meeting. Um, these all make the decision, one of them will make the decision on the awards that go out for the annual. And the other will start working on the construction issues. I'm trying to think what else. And then there's all those other duties, like I have served as nominating chair for the last few years. Mostly because I say, why not? I can't miss it up too much.
Where where do they meet?
I want to get the number right, but I, it's on Essex Street, it's where. Albany, oh, sorry, in in Albany, it's the same place where they do all the sorting and everything. Want to see sixty six, but I'm afraid I'm at this point, I've forgotten the number. No, it's near, it's near um.
Honest Way and C D T A.
I I always thought it was sixty six, and last time I looked, it said, no, it's not. Um, Honest Weight Food Co. Is fairly close, you know, you go down Essex, you can cross right into the parking lot of Honest Weight.
No, um, you you said this already, and I missed it, so how many people are on the board?
Two small libraries, Renza County, um. Wait, one small library, Renza County, one small library, Albany County, one medium. So four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it feels like there's more, then there's a D A, someone from the Directors Association is always there too. And I feel like I'm missing something. I know I am, but.
And then. And then is Tim the president or whatever?
Tim is the executive director, he pretty much, there is a president, a vice president. Secretary and treasurer, secretary. The minutes are always taken by um a member staff. So it's usually Jana, um, Favreau. Um, and when she's not available, then Judith Lindses. Stepped in or whomever else is. One of the other managers. Um. So. Trying to think what else. Well, five years. Of my official term, and then I, whoever takes this on is is committing to five years.
You did your dealer.
Some of us love this stuff, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You know, I feel, you know, honestly, I feel like I've been ate in an effective advocate. And I think they are very symbiotic in. Nature and being here and being there.
May I make a motion?
Yes, you may, well, first see if anybody else wants to.
That's what, that's what was my question was, is anyone else interested in it? So.
Carolyn, does that mean if anyway, this question? You would have to go to the.
I think I went to Yuri once.
Yes, you did.
That was it.
That was really cool. Anyone online interested?
Uh, I I didn't hear, did Carolyn say she was interested?
No, Maria, I'm not interested. It's too many years.
Yeah, I I I got, I had the feeling that that the answer to that question kind of changed. The atmosphere in the room. It is a long time.
It is a long time. That's a long time. I mean, like. In in a year and a half, I wouldn't be on this board anymore, so would I still be? You know, you know, or do I have to run again? Do you have to be? Do you have to be on a board in order to be? No?
Um, there is one, one library, one live member library, who, A, because they could not find anyone on their board to. Take the spot for their library, and it was a dedicated seat. I believe, um, they had to change the bylaws just to touch to say anyone within that. Community, you know, the community served. And then that library came back and said, uh, can we get someone from another community? And they were, no, this is as far as you're going. So, um. There is. That possibility, we've had a couple people on the board who have not been library board members. Some that are past members, some. Were returning members to their own library boards, some who have never been on the board at all, it's it's a little bit of a mix.
Well, and. There's nothing to say you won't be on the board. In the future.
True, very true.
Um, but. And I'm not sure, even though it's a five-year term, I don't know that one would have to fill that, I know that. Uh Evelyn spoke about filling in the rest of the term from the pre actual, actual. Previous uh presidents of. Although it is a five-year term, I don't know that you would have to feel that it's a. It's a five-year commitment.
Well, there's no such thing as servitude, it's kind of illegal to. Servitude, but. So I'll broach the question again, does anyone else? Want their name put forward? I do not. Would you like to make the motion then?
And make a motion. That Detroit Public Library Board supports. Our President Evelyn Kats Greenstein. For a term of office on.
Do we have a second? Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Jerry, is that a night?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, thank you so much. Okay, um, the number four, evaluation. Fundamentals, I wasn't quite sure how to term that one, so. That's the fancy name I used. When we had our discussion with Paul about. His evaluation. No, we're not talking about the actual, we are just literally going to discuss. Our thought process about what an evaluation is, if that's okay with everybody. Because I I'm I'm going to try to be careful with my words, which I know I'm not always great at. But we sort of stumbled, I hope that would be a good word, on what the evaluation. Actually was. Distilled into is the evaluation of the director and evaluation of the institution? Or it is an evaluation? Of the director. The individual in that spot. So I thought maybe it might be a good thing before we try to have this conversation with. Our our director again, that we. Get this out and try to discuss it. Hash it out, because it might mean some changes to the instrument, it might mean some changes in how we deal with them. So I'm.
Okay, specifics, and I don't know what you're referring to as stumble thing.
I'll put it this way. I thought. We were working on an evaluation of an individual in a position. Rather than evaluating. The libraries as a whole, or the role, that position. How that functions in the library, I thought we were evaluating. An individual. In a specific position for. What had occurred in the previous year. And using that to. As a springboard forward. There's been some question if we were talking, if we were really taking another look. Not. At the library as opposed to the individual. I will also make the comment that this is now going on a point where. We're about. To start. Working on the. This, the next years, so. Tell us what we're supposed to do.
I I I my understanding was that it was on the individual and how they performed in that job, I mean, I think our job. Is continually to be evaluating how the library. Works within the community and whether it's functioning correctly, so. I I think that's kind of something the board does, or should be doing on a continual basis.
Yeah, I I agree with you, I'm not sure that. I guess I didn't. See where the instrument that we've. Been using, or the conversation we had based on that instrument, were not consistent with. Those goals. Is is that something that we've, that there are concerns that the instrument was not? Well structured, or that that the instrument was not well applied? And which case then, I think I'd like to hear more specifics of what exactly is being. What the concerns were.
Okay.
Oh, wait, actually, Brianna wanted to talk decks and then all.
No, I was just wondering, everyone that I thought we were evaluating. All, however.
Okay. Oh, okay, that that was it, I think somebody had commented that they had looked at it differently when they were answering the questions. And that they would have changed some answers possibly, I do know that Paul was pretty. Clear that he thought it was. A discussion of the institution. And I will, you know, we we were looking at what's on the agenda, and he goes with, and I said, you know, this is the theoretical. It's, we're not talking about you, we're just doing this theoretical week, and um, you were pretty clear about where you stood. Got, yeah, I was. So he he really thinks it's institutional, not individual.
Well, what is the role of the board? Is the role of the board to to evaluate him in his job? And and that's what it should be, whether he believes that's what it was meant to be or not.
Okay, I I do know that if you've ever talked to um. Tim Burke. Tim Burke always thinks the evaluation is of the institution. And none of the individual, and he and I have a fun disagreement, you know, we have a charming disagreement about that, is I go. No, that's a whole different thing, because you can have an institution, I'm not talking about this one in particular now. That works beautifully because. Everyone knows what they're doing, does it well, knows how to work together, and can keep the institution going, even though the director may be. Not as hands-on. Or hands-on at all.
But but the directive from Nyla is that the board evaluates the director and the job he is doing.
That's the way I thought we were writing and changing the document. And that's the way I answered it personally was. The individual in that role, rather than a more holistic look. At how are we doing as a library?
Now, I was.
I use another document for that.
I was not there for that, was was he being evaluated, was it the board? Or was it just the admin committee, or who was?
Everyone had the oppo- opportunity to respond online.
Right, and yes, and I did, I I think that's a, that's a tough. Have a hard time sitting there listening to five people.
But he had asked for that, he had said he wanted to talk. To the entire board, not.
But that's when he thought it was an institution being evaluated and not a person. I'm, you know.
At this point.
Do you think it was, do you think it was going to be a commentary on the institution or institution commentary on a person?
What he thought it would be, I'm sorry, you know, you go ahead, I don't. What he walked into and what he thought it was. Beforehand, that I don't know, is we didn't go. Through it, and I would have thought because of previous. Conversations about evaluations, he would have realized we were thinking of it as a. Evaluation of the individual, when he got here, there was a whole different.
Well, it sounds like we need to communicate better.
My impression of the commentary. Time was he, I thought, I think that he was. Interpreting our comments as being a commentary on the organization as a whole, as opposed to commentary on his. Execution of that role. And again, I'm not sure. How this conversation, how far we can go with this conversation in a public session.
Yeah, right, it just gives us some idea of where we kind of stand. And how we looked at it when we were.
I will say this. Wouldn't need a little guidance by, for June, by June anyway, be prepared in the board meeting to tell the F. Whoever is going to, yeah, the committee or whoever else you want to handle that document, how you want it done. We got a couple months, but. Yeah, I also don't want to muddy the waters. When, as we come up to something else on the agenda that we have to. We have to start thinking about is. Working towards the twenty-four budget.
Jerry, Marie?
Yes, what?
Oh, uh, just kind of your stance, especially as you've completed the. Evaluation, are you looking at it, the evaluation is more of a. Commentary on the director, the individual versus the institution?
I thought it was. Evaluating the director, not the institution.
Um, Marie?
I I'm I'm kind of surprised to have the question asked. I I thought it was pretty clear that we were evaluating the director, I mean, it's called. Director evaluation with not institution evaluation. I'm sort of taken aback to. To have this posed as a question.
I think after, after the actual conversation. I think it's. I thought it was important to discuss it, and I think trying to just talk to Paul about it one-on-one is, would be helpful. But um, you know, uh, the theory of it. But I think it needs to be said, and at some point, maybe he'll get to listen to this too. But it's always good to get. The thought process out. So we all know where everybody was looking at it, so there's no question about how people were answering it. In case it comes up, okay.
So are we moving forward as an evaluation, or is it done, or what is?
Well, we didn't evaluate, we started the conversation, we're going to go back, and then he was not able to make it the date that we.
Yeah, that was.
So we were going, we put it aside, and then things have since.
And now, in a way. Let's face it, folks, it's getting to be pretty stale. In terms of when we got to start the next one, but if, I I think I understand what you want. To happen. In the next couple of months, if like. So that helps, that tells me I'm not looking to write a new document, a totally new document with a different focus.
So in this interim, do people want, would people be willing to look at the document again? See if there's anything that. Any of us would like changed in it? Um, it's in the Dropbox.
It is, okay.
It's in the Dropbox, absolutely. Um, and get a feel for it, see if there's any changes. And then just, we can decide when, if we want to, and it's sounding like. There's a a thought to just redo it. If you're thinking it's, yeah.
I'm 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 very concerned because some of the, what I considered the overriding issues are still not being addressed. You know, my big concern has been that there, the um. I I never know the term, Keith, you have a better term for this, but the institutional uh. The, you know, the planning for succession, the succession planning, and. And also the, you know, having an outline. That's where somebody else could take over. I I think these, this is a big gap that has persisted. In spite of our efforts to try and get him to address it. And that's no comment on the institution, that's a comment on him as a director. Uh, so if we are going to put aside the evaluation that was done previously, maybe we can at least. Uh, so if we are going to put aside the evaluation that was done previously, maybe we can at least. Address some of the the really big issues with him.
We're we're on perilous ground here. Yes.
Without being an executive.
You have given me some guidance of. How to start working on. That the next one right now. And how to. Communicate what you want to say and possibly get very early communication with. Individuals to be evaluated so. That they know what's coming.
And and you know, I remember discussing this months ago and saying that we wanted it to occur. At the beginning of the year as far as the feedback so that there was time for you that changes could be made. And I I certainly would not fall to for wanting to go ahead and and prepare Keith for the next one. But um, it it is, it is very concerning that this seems to. Go on. Perpetually.
What is, what is the target date for the annual evaluation? Is it September? Is it January? Is it?
We were going through that as a discussion about when we should do it. So.
When was the last one done?
It was late because.
It was in, it was like November or something, wasn't it?
The discussion was, do we do it? For. July or so as we're working with with targeting with the budget also. And because we felt the need to. Change the document and communicate and agree up with the board at that time. As well as the pressure on going things, we did not actually get this out to the board members' hands to November. And then we ran head on into holidays, illnesses and storms. So. This is my concern i- in that. If if you want it to happen for early summer. We gotta nail this down for June. Or July at the light, but I prefer to nail it down for June. But cer- certainly what the work we did. In two thousand twenty two. Puts us in a better place. As to what we want the evaluation to be and a better place how we can communicate that. To the individuals being evaluated, individ- individual, individual. But it's certainly the work we did there on some of that. It's helped us as a board in how each of the committees takes care of certain things. What questions are asked and what information is shared? That had, it that has helped us.
In my hearing. That as a group, we're more interested in. Not finishing the conversation we started with him. And just looking at the instrument again. Adding whatever pieces need to be and then. Responding to that. As the beginning of a new process.
I'm okay with that as long as it's timely, as long as we're doing it.
So we have like.
Yeah, we were not trying, we were not trying we and. That to some extent, not being timely jeopardized process. So it's like, we might as well, my thought is take our wumps on it. Move on, even if we want to run basically the same document. We just gotta take our wumps on it because the calendar worked against us.
Well, so our target would be to to actually do a formal evaluation with the director by the end of July? Is that what we're the end of June? I mean.
I think. By the end of June, if we're going to really look at hammering down that budget.
Right.
Um, then by the end of June, we should have had. The instrument reviewed, uh, the instrument distributed, responded to and that conversation with Paul occurring.
Okay.
So, so beginning.
What, sorry?
Brianna?
Yeah.
I think I interrupted you talking.
Okay, um, I was gonna ask them, by what point do you keep? Want our edits? Like, can we back ourselves into? Uh, being done with it by June? What does that mean for edits? What does that mean for when it goes out to the board? What does it mean for our deadline to respond?
What I'm thinking is. Rather than send everybody chasing through Dropbox in the next week. Send out the clean document again, now that we've had one practice shot at with it. And tell me how you feel about each one. And if you've got something you really want there instead of or in addition to.
We'll get something from you. And what are we getting? The a blank document or? What kind of a?
A blank version of what we touched last year. And it should come out next week. I'm going to ask. To make sure it goes out cleanly and promptly. I will ask our technical expert to forward that. Yes.
Good idea. She will be back next week. Just so you know, she you won't probably see her this week.
Yes, so it's rather than four seven, give me the the Thursday of the next of this following week.
Twenty first?
And then when do you want our edits side? Or commentary if we have any?
Certainly prior to the May meeting.
You want to give us a week before so it can be incorporated? So we have a final document for the May.
So it would be.
On May ninth is our next, our main.
I give you a week.
I'll be frank, I don't look at things on Tuesdays any because of the work commitment now it so.
This is Monday, Monday first.
Five, four? That sounds fair.
Makes it shorter for you, but five, four is fine.
Yeah, it just means that by you only have till the night.
Or you want five, five, three might work. Yeah, no, no time, five, three.
At twelve o'clock, hi. And then we'll vote on it at the May nine meeting. And then.
That is the intent. Or you read a vote on, vote on something or. Flim- flims the skin from my bones and work because you don't like it. You're getting feedback on the fourth.
Then if I vote on it. Four days later, five days later, that'd be, you know, if you're seeing any changes, I might have the discussion about so. Could people please refresh my memory? I apologize. When is the budget vote?
Sept- you mean the public?
Public vote.
September.
So we'll be looking through the.
Probably the fourth Tuesday.
July then before the budget process.
Oh, yeah, sooner by the end of June. So we know if we have to put in any more monies.
Because.
In July, we're pretty much.
I'm I'm just trying to think about workload, internal workload and I know. Budget together.
For August, we have to vote on it to submit. To the public.
So the director, if we're voting on the. Budget in August, the director is really under pressure to. Um, get that work ready, the budget ready to present to the board for vote. So if we are having our own. We go through that. Review process. As a board. May I ask that we do the. Evaluation with the director after. The director has presented the budget to the commit to the board. So that we don't add that to the director's plate while he's trying to prepare.
I was, I was actually hoping to get this done ahead of the fourth, fourth of July. Because that was where we started to slip and slide la- this last time through. As we got into budget and then elections and.
You mean done with the director?
Yes, and that might take a special meeting to do, but.
Fourth of July, that would give the director a month then of focused time to get a budget. Together in time for the August meeting and I'm okay with that as well. I just want to make sure we're not.
Didn't we, and I should know this. So didn't we come up with a timeline for the budget for this year that we've never had before and that it by certain dates, certain things had to be done?
We've had a timeline before. I think we just. Articulated it a little bit better.
And some of the we're doing.
Find it so that I we make sure that we're. I I suppose I should be in charge of making sure we're on track. Um. Right, didn't we as part of our finance policy? So, okay, that's why I have to define the finance policy. Okay.
Um, you were gonna say something, I think, no. Thing is, though, if we wait until he's presented it and we wanted to add something. We we need to know where's basically if there's going to be an increase in salary or not. And that we have to have.
Thank you. That's a good point. I I I I think you raised a good point there. So yes, that's a reasonable way to do that. Uh, may I ask that we try and not do it four weeks before, within four weeks before the budget presentation? So.
Oh, gosh, yeah. So we would have this done. That's why I think if we do it by July fourth, that we can talk and say, okay, what are we gonna do?
Thank you. That's, I I think you're.
We struggled on that last year plus there was was a substantial amount of revision. With. While people have expressed concerns and we will try to take them and work this out. I don't think we've. We've got to go back to the frame rails this time. I I so I'm hoping the process moves much faster.
I generally agree that I don't think the issue needs significant changes. For that.
I think we've come up with a plan.
I think so. I think I understand what I'm supposed to do and what I'm supposed to do it so.
Yep, if we, you know.
But but we're throwing out everything from that we've done?
No, we're not.
Well, in terms of the evaluation, we did.
Well, the evaluation's been shared with the director. The director has seen the evaluation. He understands the comments. We've, he's had the chance to digest them. I don't think we need to belabor it. We did not have the chance to do.
A line by line with him, but he has seen it and he has made some comments on it. And the problem is. We're running out of time to do a line by one. It's we we just got to take the hit and focus on. The twenty three, twenty four year or we're 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 in trouble again.
Well, so from from what you're saying, then he should have changed his. He should have responded. To the evaluation.
Well, I think he.
We should see some change. If if we felt there was change necessary, we should see some evidence of that change.
And so next year will tell. He he's gotten the feedback and actions will speak for. Whether that. Feedback's been internalized or not, we can then.
And again, remember we are in public session, so. We were, we need to be careful how much we pursue this.
And I think then we again have a plan and we'll go forward if you need to call calling it an admin committee meeting would not be a bad idea too. So.
By next week, you should see.
All right.
The document we used this previous year. And then we can make. Mark that up. But I don't, I don't think we're gonna have to do anything more than. Make the Chrysler look like a Dodge maybe, but it's gonna be on the same frame.
Okay, okay. Um, five, long range plan. I don't, to be honest, I don't know if we want to start turning this piece apart, right?
Well, you have, who's, anybody have a seven o'clock hardback or?
You can say yes. Okay, yeah.
What do we have? What else do we have to do in the next twenty five minutes?
So um, I did. Just I'll I'll be quick then for that and we can do again. And this isn't due tomorrow. Any more than it was yesterday. Um, Kirsten did make some uh, changes, some suggestions. I've set it out. I have some printed copies. If you want a printed copy, if you want to write. I'd like to scribble on things too. Um. Thank you for that, Kirsten. Um, those are something to prove again, and if anyone has any other changes and thoughts. I know everyone wanted to review it from the last time we met. Um, so please, if there are any, look at Kirsten's. Kirsten's is overlaid on the, I'll call it the original draft. Did not copy the the twenty eleven. So if people have thoughts about. Changes, writing, et cetera. Kirsten's suggestions, what have you. Oh, again, again, yeah, it does not imply that. There are, there are some things I'll even say, we might need to move, that there are good, some good ideas, but move them a little bit, like you do some things. So please, um, forward then.
Okay, you don't want to talk about them now?
Do you want to, is anyone want to talk about it? That's fine.
But I know.
Well, the only thing I'm looking at right here is.
The number three environment. Yeah, but like, yes, please, should we be more specific in light of what has happened in the library recently? I mean, the first number one is provide a safe, secure and comfortable environment for staff. What are we doing to provide a safe environment?
So add some word under here.
I think, do you have any?
I think you have to, I mean, I, you know.
So move it, move environment up the chain pretty much because. If you. If you believe. Maslow's argument. It starts with, do you feel safe?
Well, the one thing I'll offer is that there are ways to do that. There are, there are physical things one can do.
Right.
And there are also staffing things one can do as well. And so, yeah, it should be looked at and should be, we should talk about it and, you know, their policies. We should understand what they are, how. And. Uh, creating a secure environment does not necessarily mean uh. Pardon me or creating a bunker like enclosure.
Right, but making people feel that they can come to work and be safe and so forth, you know.
To be bringing back a really good security guard system. Which we had before COVID, but not a really good one. Effective, I gotta put it that way, effective, effective. So, um, if you have particular wording and suggestions, please send that.
I'm I'm confused at what we're supposed to be looking at.
I came in an email today, Marie.
Came in the email?
Yes. Around around new time, I think.
Could have been, forget when I was here.
And from whom did it come?
Evelyn.
Evelyn?
Correct.
I'm also getting to the Dropbox, but it is the revisions. With. Kirsten's suggestions and I think. I'm hoping it's pretty clear what. The suggested word to change add. Move.
Oh, it didn't come till two o'clock.
Seriously?
That's what I have is the, it says long range plan. And it's one fifty eight P M.
Okay.
So I didn't see that.
Okay.
I I looked at something from February. Uh, because that's what I thought had been referenced.
Okay, but we, you know, we've been asking if anyone has any suggestions. Comments on that draft to please. Um, forward then, bring them up. Do you have any thoughts right off the top of your head, or I should say top of your head, that you would wish to share now?
Um, well, I didn't read it for one thing, so it's hard to say. But the one I looked at from February, I thought. Yeah, I was, it it wasn't measurable. So much of what was in it wasn't measurable. I felt. That things should be more measurable.
My my comments had nothing to do with measuring, Marie. So if you have thoughts on how it might be edited to be more measurable. Perhaps you could share those. Revisions.
Um, you mean now?
Go back to your original email and, and, you know. Put some edits in and, and I don't want to speak forever, and I apologize.
No, don't, please go right ahead, anytime, go for it.
Perhaps you might, uh, put them in an email and share them out. Marie.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll read what, what this says. I'm not sure what I looked at was really. The current version.
Well, my edits are very minor and then had nothing to do with measuring anything.
Right, I understand that, but I'm not sure what I was looking at was the most current version. Since this new one. Came through after I prepared.
Well, if you go back to the February one, that is probably, I will call it the bar current version. These, these are suggestions and we're gathering suggestions now and layering them and then going through what the suggestions are. So we can come up with the final piece.
So when I look at this, which one should I be looking at? I mean, that was my question.
Well, my thought.
To make sure I was looking at the right thing.
If you look at the one that came today. That has the first layer, so put on your layer on top of that, and then we'll go through with the layers.
So you're saying I should make comments on what arrived today?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, are we good with this for now?
Back in the old days, we used to do it with different colored pencil.
This is why I like to scribble on paper, sorry. Electronics is fun enough, but. The twenty-twenty-four budget, we put it on there because A, we went a hundred percent sure about what Paul was gonna be. Um, arriving today and two, it is part of our. Articulation that we start talking about it now. So it might be a rather shortened version of a discussion about where we want a budget to go. But, um.
Well, it's obvious to me. That. There is going to have to be. An ongoing conversation and a commitment. Towards a, a greater commitment towards the scare, security and safety. Because the streets are changing out there and so the environment's changing here. It's also pretty obvious to me that. Energy costs are going to stay high. And that's got to be factored into the budget. I don't, I don't see it dropping anytime soon. I think we're paying this. We're paying what we paid this winter, probably next winter.
Well, and if we add air conditioning, we expect it to go higher. Our utility bills to go higher.
We've got two years out on that one. The next board will hand us, but we got two years out before we had, we have the thing running.
And I, I agree, I think twenty-twenty-four's budget probably is a good enough to cover.
But again, part of the reason we're doing. Of a modern H V A C system climate is we've been incurring costs. In a variety of line items because we haven't maintained proper atmospheric conditions in the building. So part of the reason we're doing this, this whole project. Is. So we don't have to pay more later.
And what is a tax cap?
Changes, I think, each year, but it's just under two percent.
Two percent, I was gonna say two percent.
Yeah, two percent is, but there's a formula that can bring, bring it down or up.
Yeah, there is some, but we do sign the, um. Affidavit. That we, we as a board will go over the tax cap.
Right, if we decide to do it.
Sometimes we do it even before we've done the budget, just finished the budget because we have it, we have it in place and we know we can go. I have not seen a year since I've been on this board that we have not signed that. On that. So, um.
Certain types of boards, that's one of the first things council recommends you do as part of your budget process.
I, I will, I will say that I, you know. In the quick, very quick talk I had with Paul on the budget, that I think he'd like to be a little bit more cautious this year. About the budget considering what we did last year. So I'm gonna share that with the group. Uh, we didn't look at numbers, we didn't look at percentages or what, we just, he said, maybe we should show some care this year. I know some are.
Fifteen percent, is that right?
Yeah, almost sixteen.
Inflation, uh, do we know what inflation is now nationally or regionally?
Who knows what's gonna be tomorrow?
Actually, if you sit down and look at our budget. It's all. Well, everything is prepped up. Or most things have prepped up. It's only a couple of areas where. Inflation. Is really driving. And one of them is energy costs.
Me so for, you know, future discussions, keep, start thinking about what you think. How robust. This budget should, could be. And where? Okay. Um, annual report, we will table.
Yes.
Yes, it's a necessary. But I think we've seen it, but still the discussion says director's report, we're tabling. Um. All the new business. I'll have a couple of things that people are thinking about, other things, please speak up. I'm gonna just barrel right through. Um, one. Um, Andrew Ward's obituary is in your packet. It's just a reminder that this Saturday, the fifteenth. Um, from one to three. There is his memorial, his, his. I know there's another word for it. Um, it's Embry D C's in, in Waterford. The library will be closed. From one to five that day, so staff may attend. And this is at both, both locations. Um. More cherry note, um, four twenty-seven. Is the meet and greet. Our board, the friends board. Um. Still, if any, we're going to provide the friends' friends are. Paying for this, the idea of having, um. Fancy appetizers. International flair, hopefully.
And it's, where is it? Here?
It's here, it's gonna be upstairs, um, in the, uh, art gallery. At five to six.
And it's. Just the two boards meeting each other?
Just the two boards and staff.
And staff, okay.
So we're co-hosting this for staff during library, library workers week. So.
The date, Ellen, uh, uh, Evelyn, the date of it?
April twenty-seventh, it's, um.
April twenty-seventh.
Correct. I will say yes.
Yes, please.
I would say.
If he's an omnivore, we're, we're good.
Um, yeah, here's a quick couple questions. If people have some ideas of, of interesting idea. Food stuff, uh, we've had Polish sausages, grapes, nuts, international cheeses, cheeses. Sushi, um. Grape leaves.
We'll see what we can obtain and afford, but. I'm thinking there will be, be some things there. For younger people who are starting on solid foods.
Friends will have things that are for vegan, um, no dairy, no cheese, no, that they're, they're taking care of that. They've asked if we could take care of some of the other things, uh, but there's only so much.
So who's coordinating all the food? Like, are you letting somebody know what you're bringing or so that you don't?
If you let me know, that'd be great, then I can let, um, Phil know what we're bringing that she has asked. I think it was like, if you can bring like twenty pieces of any given item. Uh, they are reimbursing every, they are reimbursing people, bring your receipts. But if we sort of know, so we're not crossing over, bringing the same things.
And basically it's finger food you're looking.
Finger food is cold. Cold, cold, we're not, we don't have, um, heating, um, and then a few, that's some cutest things over fresh market. Sorry, I'm giving an advertisement, um, little tiny bites of.
And you said twenty, no.
Yeah, I think so was suggesting twenty.
Any desserts or do you?
Oh, well, we, we, I think the cutest little, um, little pastries and then some Jordan almonds for the ethnic, you know, kind of. International flair. They look really good.
You have nice, sweet, fresh vegetables. You don't need those chocolatey, sugary things.
So, um, uh, can I say something? Can my hand is raised? Mrs. Brenna. To do. Uh, we're asking our board to contribute stuff so that we don't. Uh, take, uh, funds from. Uh, the money that we collect that goes to the library, so we will reimburse you. But if you choose to contribute stuff. Uh, out of the goodness of your heart. Uh, those of us on our board will do that the same, so we're not necessarily gonna reimburse. People on our board for the cost of this event. We were asked by the library staff to have this meet and greet and co-sponsor it with. The trustees. And we said yes.
Thank, thank you, Brenna. Well said.
Thanks, Brenna. Other thing is we've been asked to. What? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just repeat the time.
So what?
Five to six. Five to six, okay, thanks.
Um. Uh, we've been asked as an idea, uh, to put the accomplishments that we've. Had this year, um, the friends are putting up a poster board, whatever, um, their accomplishments. And first of all, do, do any of us have any graphic, um, experience? This may idea of a poster board is cutting out pictures of a, an air conditioner. And the, the things I could come up with is that aren't internal are basically, uh, HVAC. The New York State Retirement System. Salaries, I don't know if people have any other ideas that I'm not thinking of.
It's a, it's a pretty good year to me.
Okay, and if anyone does have an idea. Let me know, and if anyone knows anyone who's really good at graphics.
I, I can think of, can think of a soundtrack, but don't have an ASCAP license.
Okay.
We start with, I'm still standing.
All right, so. Um, and we have a little bit of news is, um, the outreach, there's an outreach committee. We, we sort of had one, and Carolyn, you're gonna hear more about this too, and you might too, Kirsten, because I know you were interested. So Lori Dreyer, who is now outreach coordinator along with Virginia, um. Westcott, uh, have been compiling a list, a spreadsheet of events that the library. Is looking into horsement, has been asked to, um, participate in. Uh, the musical, in fact, sent me a, a list of their events for summer and asked if we would like to join them and. Lori and Virginia have that. Um, the committee will be meeting soon, by the way. Um, to kind of go over what we can do, what we can't do. And, and come up with the. Pushing forward an outreach plan. Plan, I don't know, that's a word, but. Working on outreach. Um, alrighty, I think that. Director's report, chief report, any other new business or old business?
I, um, yeah. Oh, oh, just a quickie. In addition to the memorial for Andrew, um. Uh, the, uh, friends are also having a pop-up, uh, book sale at the farmer's market on Saturday. Um, so, uh. And, uh, as part of the, uh. What the, um. Probably Andrew's wife asked is that in lieu of flowers. That, um. People make contributions to the friends of the library. And so people have been making contributions to us. Uh, in Andrew's name, and I will be at the memorial, um. Uh, and you know, I'm. I probably will write. His widow and, but I, um, I wanted you to, you all, unless you didn't notice it on the obituary that. Um, this was the ask from the family and people are in fact responding.
Thank you. Okay, any other old new business? Um, I think in. I'm not ending yet. Sorry.
I thought you were looking at your.
No, I wanted to see what time it was because, um, I think in the time we will skip community feedback. And we'll go to public comment, please. Nobody here, but. Anyone out there?
Anyone for public comment?
Going twice, I want to say going three times. Okay, public comment. So date and time of our next meeting, May nine, five o'clock for finance. By thirty for regular meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
All right, on saver. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.